Good to go, good to go.
Go ahead, sir, whenever you're ready.
Well, did you start?
Yes, sir.
No, no countdown. Oh, you gotta be ready every time. Oh, yeah. It's good to be with you this evening, Vice President here, Comanche in the sled, twelve hundred boxes team, auto, Comanche, best of cha. Clash, you best, and I, it's good to be with you this evening on this November nineteenth. Uh, COVID nineteen Town Hall update. So with us tonight is Representative Orlando Teller, who'll be sharing. Uh, what he's been doing with us during this pandemic and also sharing from his heart this evening. Along with the usual uh cast here of updates, timely updates, uh in informative updates. Our own President Jonathan Nez and our Executive Director, Dr. Jill Jim, and uh. Also of Navajo Department of Health and and also uh Dr. Philia Fowler from our director, our Director of our Human Resources. Here on Navajo. Uh, so um as we always do, uh we always open up with a word of prayer. So if you would indulge me, uh let's begin. Again, God, we thank you, Lord, for another day of life. We thank you, Father, for this evening, Father. Leadership given, uh timely updates, Lord. We pray you be with us, Lord, uh give us uh your wisdom and your knowledge, Lord, to. Disseminate this information, Lord, and uh be the wiser for it, Father. All across our nation, Lord, our people are hurting. But we pray you be with those that are are sick, Lord, that you'd bring salvation and healing, Lord, to them. Father, those that are in mourning, Father, be with them, Lord. Uh, your grace and your mercy, Lord, which is sufficient for us in this time and age. Lord, you knew about this this virus that would come and the hardships, Lord, that would entail. Father, we ask you be with us, Father. Let us seek you with all our heart, Lord. With all our minds and with with all our our everything within us, Father, to um see your your reasons and your provision, Lord. You are Jehovah Shama. You are all around us, Lord, waiting for a recognition of it. So we thank you again for your preeminence. But we ask you to be with us in this time, uh your wisdom, your knowledge, Lord, Father. Let us act on the information accordingly. And may the people be blessed, Lord, all across the land, Father. We call for healing. In the Navajo Nation, Lord, in our sisters and brothers, Lord, in the Indian country, all across the nation, Lord, the continent, Lord. The United States of America, Lord, and to the world, Father. For you know, every one of us, Lord, uh everyone, we are created in your image. We thank you again. In Jesus' name, we pray, God. Amen. So this evening, we are uh slated to begin, and so uh we look forward to um um hearing the timely updates from. Our own President of the Navajo, the great Navajo Nation, and we appreciate his exemplary leadership here in this fight against COVID nineteen. And mitigating it, what it looks like all across the land, uh helping those, Lord, and helping uh those that uh are predisposed. Uh, health conditions and Lord and those that are that are um not able to readily fight this. So the nation comes alongside them. So we thank our our President Jonathan Nez for his leadership. So without further ado, uh. Ladies and gentlemen, Jonathan Nez, the President of the Navajo Nation. Sir, take it away.
Uh, yeah, there's not. Vice President Wizer, uh thank you for the prayer and thank you for your work and I. Uh, I guess you'll be talking about um uh some of the items that you've been working on, uh and maybe. You may be headed to Socorro tomorrow, I don't I don't know. Uh, if that fits into your 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 schedule, but I would appreciate you all being a part of that uh resolution there of. Uh, getting a alternative care site established for. Thank you for your leadership. Although I didn't. Ah, I'm gonna do that so. Kudo. Ah, could you. Now, I don't know. Uh, you can't do that. Uh, I'm gonna get you. Like, yeah, yeah, I have a name that's so. Well, here. Uh, kudo, eh, yeah. Uh, Allah, Nezna, Dean, Dobaan, this Dean, Dobaan, Allah, the million. Dobaan, so. Nezna, Dean. Ashla, Dean, Dobaan, Allah, in a little. You can. Test of the. Ako, test of the. Eh, but I don't know, eh, yeah. Now, I still. Do, wow, now, I still. In a little. You can. And they. Ako, la. Yeah, and I still. You should ask. Eh, yeah. Now, I still. So, it's the million years, Dobaan, that's. In a little. You can. Eh, kudo, it's. Bah, and they say. Yeah, and I still. So. Nezna, Dean, Dobaan, that's. So, Nezna, Dean, Dobaan, that's. Eh, come, you can. It's. Ah, do, did it. Kudo, she. Uh, but she does. Ah, do. They go, she. Now, it's there. Ah, yeah, go, they, they. Ah, could you. Ah, do, I know. Uh, that I was. Ah, do. Now, I need. Eh, ah, shawn, deh. She had to. We. Now, I'm. And when the. Ako, I don't know. Then, I can. Now, you have. On dasn't. Uh, DJ, yeah, they. They. Who's the. How to. I believe. He know. Long, the desk. La, 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 yeah, go, la, the desk. Even in a. Can't. Ah, come, they. Do, I believe. Ah, yeah, you can. Come, they. Eh, ah, I. To now. They. The same. Ah, oh, term, uh, term. Temperature. You get the. Ah, she. They should. Kudo, do. Then, I catch it, do. She go. Vice President. They need. Radio. Allah, a. Ah, what, ah, eh, I'm gonna. Then, I catch it, do. Ah, do, do. I'm gonna. Now, I. That, no. Past. Do, that. Eh, Joe, Joe. So, the. Allah, it's. Da, da. Do, the change. Not. But I told. Ah, ta. Nezna, Dean. Dobaan. Uh, has. Ah, yeah, go, la. What, ah, eh, yeah. The desk. Come, I saw. But I told. Now, I still. Se. Eh, in a. But I told. The million years, Dobaan. Come, it's. You can. He has. Now, I still. Do, I. Allah, it's. Allah, Nezna, Dean, Dobaan, has. In a little. Allah, it's. Allah, Nezna, Dean, Dobaan, has. Ban, so. La, yeah, go, the desk. They need. Eh, eh, kudo. So, I want to say thank you, and uh we have Representative Teller on, uh we have Vice President on, we have. Dr. Jim, Dr. Fowler on, that's gonna continue to give you information about this COVID nineteen. That's our focus. I know people wanna hear about the CARES Act dollars, the hardship, you know. We are focusing on protecting our citizens right now. That's why it's critical that we get this message out to everybody and we ask for your help. A hundred and forty-four thousand five hundred and fourteen people have been tested. Fourteen thousand eighty-five have tested positive since the start of this pandemic. Eight thousand twenty-eight have recovered. Six hundred and eighteen people have lost their lives to COVID nineteen. You know, those eight thousand and twenty-eight that have recovered, some still have some permanent. Um, long-term effect from this virus. Yesterday from five to today at five, and I just got this fresh off the press just now. A one hundred and sixty-seven people tested positive. In one day, twenty-four hours. One day. And. Let's continue to get the word out to our citizens. And today, we're gonna do something a little bit different. After Vice President uh does his update, he's gonna introduce Mister, our Representative, Teller. See, even leadership, even me as your president, my our my brother, Vice President Wizer. My K, Mr. Teller, we're we're not immune to this virus. And he'll share with you his story. You know, we could catch this virus at any time. If we let down. And you know what? People are letting down throughout the Navajo Nation. We need to stay strong, keep going. I hear grandmas and grandpas out there saying, President, we're listening to you. We're staying home. And please don't comment and say, people are not listening. That's where your words are powerful. Be careful. There are many, many people that don't comment, that are listening, especially our elders are listening, they're staying home. And today, I had to call one of my clan sisters, clan aunties. From Shonto. Because she lost her husband. And expressing my condolences and. Comforting her and just imagine six hundred and eighteen families have lost someone. And it's no joke. And it and it's not time to blame yourself or blame others. This is happening all across the country. But we've done it before to where we brought the numbers down, and we can do it again by helping each other, ladies and gentlemen. Speak positive things to everyone. Encourage and inspire your fellow brothers and sisters here on the nation. And to plead with them. To stay home and to take care of themselves. Doesn't just have to come from the leadership. It can come from you. I remember, that's what our teaching holds. That we have the ability to help each other out and let me also encourage you to do that, everyone. Trying time, we we are wearing world, we're in record-breaking numbers now. Even past our first phase or our first wave. But you know what? We're gonna overcome this. We're gonna overcome this by. Working together. Let's help each other out. And let's get through this together. We love you, we care about you. That's why we do this. I'm gonna make it short because we have a special guest today, and we're gonna also start. Getting interviews with some of the frontline workers. Uh, and changing up our Town Hall a little bit. Stay vigilant, everybody. And stay strong. And we will. Get through this together. Let's hold each other up through these trying times, ladies and gentlemen. So I'm gonna turn the time over to Vice President, he's got an update, and then we'll give it to our Arizona State Representative, uh Mr. Teller. After our Vice President. So thank you so much, Vice President. Back to you.
Alright, I appreciate that. Thank you, Mr. President. Uh, yes, uh, we do have um an esteemed guest with us tonight, so. Um, I will, myself, will try to. Keep this real short, so it's great. Uh, we also had a. A very uh constructive discussion here before Town Hall this evening and um. We had a um, the uh Navajo Nation worker had suggested that we uh bring on other guests. Uh, not because we're boring or whatnot, but maybe because we're boring, I don't know. But um really, to uh bring more vital information, and this happened to be. Uh, on the that company that's cleaning all of our Navajo Nation offices all around uh Navajo. Um, and and so look forward to collaborating with them, bringing them on, and they could describe what it looks like. Uh, you know, the chemicals they use, what they do, some of the techniques, I guess, and and the protocol. And uh, you know, uh, and I think to that, too, the flip side of that is when we do pay these companies to come in and clean. Number one, that they do a great job, and number two, that their sanitizing is effective, but. The flip side of that is that it brings a peace of mind, uh a sense of confidence to our workers, our nation's workers here. And so, you know, that uh is, it goes a long way, uh providing safe and. Uh, um, you know, uh effective, uh, um, I guess, uh, you know, workplaces that are that are safe, that people can come. To work with confidence and and know that they're they'll be safe while they're working. So we know there's a a lot of our people uh that. Just come in, it's tentative, you know, you clock in and and you start your day and and you get visitors from other offices. And so, it it gets tense, so right right now, the stress of this COVID nineteen pandemic is wearing down on on all of us. And so prayers go out to all of you, who appreciate Katerina this evening for chiming in. And uh, you know, giving us uh that that idea to do that, we'll bring in uh cleaning companies and uh some of the things that they look at, and how we could help them. Might help us uh in the long run. So I think that'll be uh one of our next Town Halls that will do that, bring in the cleaning companies to describe. What it is they do, why they do it, and how effective it is. And our whole goal here is to create confidence and peace of mind for our workers and. Our frontline people. So thank you, Mr. President, we appreciate that. Uh, real quick updates today, you mentioned Socorro, New Mexico. As you know, um, um, we do have an alternative care site in Chinlea, Arizona, uh we're at the Chinlea Community Center. It's a very uh uh expansive uh uh project there, uh alternative care site, step down from uh. The um, you know, urgent care that's needed in the hospitals, that the hospitals already provide, but in case of spiking. President and I had uh asked and requested that we keep at least one of the three alternative care sites that were opened here during the midst of our summer. Spiking and surges, uh if you remember, we had a alternative care site in Chinlea and also one in uh. In Gallup over at My Mira High School, and then one in Shiprock at our own uh Sassy uh Shiprock uh area um schools there. And so, uh those two have shut down. Schools thought they would be able to uh commence uh school and, you know, hosting their events and athletic events, so they had to be. Prepared and ready in case that did happen, but you and I know that that would never came to be. And so. The uh Chinlea Community Center has been a very, um, I guess, uh. Uh, Quintonate Superintendent there has been very gracious to this whole operation and has been open to what they've. Needed to do. And so P A E is the company that has been contracted with the Navajo Nation and our H C O C to bring. These effective services to our nation. In case there should be one day the second wave, there was much talked about, and lo and behold, here we are. In in the second wave, the much talked about second wave, and uh we do have uh alternative care and uh able to host. Uh, you know, numerous individuals who are uh testing positive and who need to be housed uh. In in another place that's not their home, especially if they come from a multi-generational home. So. With that said, the P A E uh is on the eve of opening up another alternative care site in Socorro, which is very close to our own. Alamo community out there, Satellite Navajo Nation community, and they've been going, uh they've been hit really hard with uh COVID. Uh, positive as of late, and so they have a real pressing need to have a a place where they can go and be isolated and receive care. Quality care at that, and P A E fits the bill. And so we appreciate our own Dr. Jill Jim and our H C O C for uh. Contracted with them to do that. But on the eve of them opening up there in Socorro, uh some logistical issues have arisen. And so, um. I have a frog in my throat. It's been hampering me all day. I went running earlier today, so I might have ingested a leaf or something. Bear with me. Um, so, uh, yeah, logistically, might have to go smooth some edges out, and so appreciate our president uh. Given authorization for that to um travel, uh sometimes travel is needed, especially when you're dealing with uh. Um, other municipalities. And so we look forward to uh helping the situation there in uh Alamo area of Socorro. So appreciate the ability to meet with the uh City Council and whatnot there. So, um, so I appreciate that. Thank you, Mr. President. And as spiking happens all around us, uh to know that Arizona is uh spiking down in the um. Metropolitan areas and uh surrounding uh communities, all communities which our Navajo people frequent. So uh that's why we've uh enacted our stay-at-home measures, uh shelter in place, let's uh consume here on Navajo and. You know, uh we'll be the safer for it. But uh New Mexico also has uh locked down some tighter uh health protocol measures in in and around the state of New Mexico, right next to us. And uh they've uh closed non-essential businesses. So uh you can go to their websites and read up on these protocols, but you know, if we're. Um, um, and I believe Utah as well, we almost left out our great state of Utah. But uh spiking going on all around us, and so uh that's really the the measure and the plan is is to stay uh to stay put, stay on our own. Uh, Navajo Nation, shop at our own stores here. I I know some have raised uh the 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 very known fact that, you know, prices are a little higher. But uh until we all, you know, can buy Navajo by local, I think, you know, we can create the momentum, that prices will come down. And of course, today, we had a a great discussion on uh bolstering our number of grocery stores here on Navajo. It's been said that, uh, you know, what what is the plan economically? And so our economic recovery work group has been working diligently. Uh, we've uh chimed in with uh our own um uh Nick Taylor, our CEO of the Navajo Nation Shopping Centers here. What that's gonna look like, collaborated with some great people uh in this discussion. But we look to be um uh bolstering that and find out what what it's gonna look like. As you know, we do need more grocery stores. Uh, the goal is is six. And at that, where do they go? So we'll be uh strategizing with those uh other leaders out there, our our chapters. And where are these uh free enterprise zones located, and where is the best uh place to uh, I guess, uh. Send send the money, so to speak, right? And so we're looking at all those and having these very real-time discussions right now. And we we do appreciate um uh the ability to do that. Um, reminder that we are all consumers, right? And so we do see the need to consume elsewhere. Um, again, by Navajo, by local, this is kind of what's. Was created for such a time as this here, to keep our people safe, stay at home, save lives. And so, uh let's all do that, uh adhere to uh. The leadership of our president here, and uh we know it's really not about, you know, you and I, it's about our elders. It's about those with predisposed health conditions. And uh real shortly here, we'll we'll hear a uh testimony from. Our own Arizona State Representative Orlando Teller here, and uh he'll be sharing some thoughts from his heart. And so uh looking forward to hearing that. And so, um, I think as I say that there, uh I I could go on and on here about some of the things that's happening, but just. Be mindful, again, there is uh uh a a second wave that we're going through, and uh those numbers are high. I'm just looking at tonight, you know, what President has said here. Uh, it's a very high number. So. Um, we do wish for you all to remain safe, vigilant, know your surroundings, and to protect yourselves, wear your masks. One hundred and sixty-seven uh more people today uh tested positive with five additional deaths. And so, uh we know. How to stay safe, and I think we just need to uh, you know, continue to be about that vigilant. Real quick here, uh just got this handed to me. Uh, probably dialing in a little bit closer, a little bit more detailed information here. Um, we do have the, in Arizona, the the mask up. Uh, Arizona here, uh per the governor here, mask up. It's not mandated yet though, so hoping that that will occur. Thousand three hundred and forty-five positive cases. Uh, there's sixty-four new cases here this evening, here with two hundred and sixty-four. Uh, deaths in the Navajo County with two, 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 two additional uh today. Apache County, four thousand six hundred and twenty-two positive cases, uh with that seventy-six new cases today. Uh, with a hundred and eighty-nine deaths, and there's uh no new deaths uh to report today. Uh, Coconino County, the last county in our Navajo Nation here, six thousand six hundred and eighteen positive cases. With sixty-one new cases today to report and two additional deaths, bringing our number up to one hundred and sixty-one in Coconino County. So as I mentioned, New New Mexico, uh they have closed a lot of their non-essential businesses, and um they do have their essentials open. Much like we all know, we're all consumers. Uh, I believe uh those businesses are are closed ten P M nightly, so. Um, not to leave out those counties that uh uh but in Navajo Nation, San Juan County in southeastern Utah. Four thousand seven hundred and seven positive cases with forty-five new cases today. We have three additional deaths, bringing the total of the two hundred and eleven in San Juan County, Utah. Uh, and lastly, to round up our counties here. San Juan County, Utah. Uh, and lastly, to round up our counties here, uh, Gallup McKinley County here, five thousand six hundred forty-seven uh, positive cases total with seventy-four new ones confirmed today. And, uh, five additional deaths, bringing the total number to two hundred and seventy. Um, probably for time's sake, I didn't get numbers for, um, San Juan County in. So, there you have it. Uh, I, I just wanted to be able to get numbers there. And, uh, we just want you all to, um, uh, be encouraged that we do pray for you, President and I, and all those, I know the leaders do, they pray, uh, uh, repeatedly. And so if we could concentrate our prayers and stand in agreement that, uh, COVID virus be taken away from our land. We declare and decree healing all across the nation, salvation to come, people to be touched and, and to know that, that God, our Creator, is the one who, who knows all things, who is around us and everything, and that we uh, just acknowledge Him and, uh, give Him his, his preeminent, uh, position here for us, that He hears us and He knows us, you know, never need, leave us, nor forsake us. So we appreciate that. And, uh, we do, uh, lift up prayers for not only the Navajo Nation, but, uh, all of Indian country and all of the United States of America and the world. So we're all in this together. Let's mask up, let's stay safe, and, uh, let's continue to be vigilant. Wash your hands, hand sanitizer. I think I'm out. It's probably too small. I should carry a larger one. The larger ones are a little bit too big though. Just want you to know that Vice President's being safe here as, as well. So, uh, love you all, appreciate you all. Ladies and gentlemen, I wanted to introduce Arizona State Representative, Mr. Orlando Teller. If you would. Didn't really give him much notice to, to turn on his, his camera there. But he'll be joining us here shortly. Uh, Mr. Orlando Teller. And then right after him, we'll also have, uh, Dr. Jill Jim and, uh, Prof. Feller. So he's already queued up, sir. It's, uh, it's good to see you this morning. Or this, yeah, I'm used to doing this in the morning. It's good to see you this evening. And, uh, congratulations on your victory here just a few weeks ago. God bless you. Thank you.
Um, okay. Hi. President. Vice President. Dr. Fowler, Dr. Shama, Dr. uh, Jill Jim. Hard work that you are, um, doing for the Navajo Nation. Not just for the nation, but for Indian country. Voicing the concerns and advocating for healthcare and a, um, solution um, to address this pandemic. So, um, yate everyone. I'm originally from Chin Lee, Arizona. My mom is Clara Tonan, and she's from Valley Store. And my late father was Anderson Teller from Twin Trails. Down in the canyon. And I'm proud to be a nineteen ninety-one uh, Chin Lee Wildcat, Go Wildcats. Um, and I'm currently, uh, your state representative for Arizona. Legislative District Seven, um, that is seven counties and eight tribes that I represent, as well as uh, twenty, uh, non-trivial communities in northern Arizona. Myself and Representative Sosi represent not only the Navajo Nation, but as I said, uh, seven other tribes, uh, as well as Senator Peschlikai. So we work in tandem in addressing, uh, concerns and issues, advocating for services in rural Arizona and Navajo. And, um, what our leader is expressing, what our, our leader is, um, sharing is i- is real. Um, for those folks who think this virus is a hoax, it's not a hoax. For those that, uh, feel like they are not gonna get it. Hopefully you're vigilant. Um, and I was tested positive yesterday. So I'm part of the statistic from yesterday's numbers. Uh, unbeknownst to me, I, you know, I, I don't know where I got it in actuality. Um, I was going down to Phoenix. Uh, as an elected official, we had to, uh, vote in our leadership, our Democratic Caucus leadership. And that usually happens two days after election. And so myself, um, and Representative Sosi were traveling separately down to Phoenix. Because this vote, uh, has to be in person, unfortunately. And, um, in the middle of the drive down, I received notice that the meeting was delayed. So I could have easily turned around and come back up to, back home. Um, but because I live so far away from the state capital, I try to combine as much as I can together. So, um, had meetings lined up in my calendar. About ten people I had to meet. Um, and so, uh, went down to Phoenix. And I returned this past Monday. And, um, I was feeling fine. On Tuesday, I woke up, I felt fine. It was a bit dusty on Tuesday. I went to it was parked vehicle, all that dust came out. So I honestly just thought it were G of Carport. So Tuesday went along and about three o'clock, I started getting a nasal drip. It was minor, it wasn't excessive. Um, by four o'clock, it became a runny nose. It was, it was frequent, more frequent. By five, six o'clock, I had a dry cough. Um, and it was an itch in the back of my throat. And, um, again, thinking this was, um, allergies, reaction to the dust. Um, by nine o'clock, I had this unusual fever, um, that, that spiked. And then it went back down again, spiked again, went back down throughout the night. It was absolutely painful. So Wednesday morning, I got up and got ready. Um, and on the way to the hospital, Chin Lee, um, I X S, I started going back into my meetings, um, and looking at, um, where exactly the contact point may have been. Um, and so I went to Chin Lee and, uh, absolutely professional, um, sincere, impersonable. They were, uh, patient with me. They talked to me very calmly. Very impressed with the, um, with the, um, the folks, the frontline workers, the super people at, um, uh, Chin Lee I X S. Thank you so much for being patient with me and helping me, um, address, uh, and, and get this all taken care of, um, as far as the first day. Um, they swabbed my nose and, um, it was highly irritated. So it felt like a needle going up my nose. So uh, that was another sign that I, uh, took note of. Um, and then they asked me to wait in the vehicle, and I did. And about an hour, forty-five minutes to an hour, uh, the nurse practitioner came out and she gave me the news that I was positive. And that, um, gave me some things that I needed to do, a, a pamphlet, uh, what not to do, what to do, um, and part of that conversation is making sure that I monitor my oxygen saturation. So, um, she was very clear. Mister Teller, if you go below ninety, you need to just drop everything and come in. There's no ifs, ands, or buts, Mister Teller. If this number ninety-six goes below ninety, please come in, no hesitation. I said, yes, ma'am, I will. And so, um, I've been monitoring my own um, oxygen saturation for the past twenty-four, um, thirty-two hours. And so I, um, I still don't know where I got it. Um, I contacted all the folks that I met with. Uh, all ten of them. Please get tested. I tested positive. Please get tested. Follow the protocols. Most of them, actually a majority of them, I would say, uh, eight out of ten got tested yesterday and today. The other two are waiting for the results. So, um, i- i- it is, it is unbelievably how contagious this virus is, how dangerous this virus is. Let me tell you, the past thirty-two hours has been excruciating. The pain, the headache has been immensely intense. It's not like any other headache I've had. It's inside and it feels like a knife is just throbbing. Um, this is my experience. Um, the intense chills and then high fever and then intense chills, high fever. I mean, my nerves are raw and it is painful. My breathing, um, late last night, um, I, I woke up and I was having labored breathing. It honestly felt like I had a, um, spider web around my lungs. You know, sometimes if you don't, if you recall, walking to a spider web and you're trying to pull off you that, that tension of that spider web can be um, so, uh, strong. I mean, that honestly felt like that around my lungs. And I, I did, um, I did, uh, have a moment, uh, with myself. And so, um, I, I made it public. I talked to, um, the Democratic leadership. Because I think it's really important that we shared stories so that we can impress upon our family, our friends, our community members. Uh, this is no joke that this virus has no, um, issues of taking you down. All day today, I, I could walk around, but I feel tired. Tomorrow, I'm gonna go outside. I, I don't want to, you know, lay around or just sit still. Um, I need to, you know, go outside into the sun. There's some natural healing powers with the sun. I've received so many calls, so many, um, advice. Um, of course, um, you know, I'm gonna follow each one to the, to the core because these are the folks that, um, I, I I, I love and they love me. And, um, you know, surrounding myself with positive, uh, uh, folks is really important. Um, I did get interviewed by, uh, News Twelve NBC this afternoon, and they asked me a poignant question. And the question was, um, um, with this pandemic affecting all corners of the state, how, what legislation could, do you think, uh, you, we need to address? In all honesty, as Mister, uh, President Nez and Vice President Lazar are doing right now, COVID is their number one priority. If we don't address this COVID and we don't hammer into community members that staying home, masking up, social distancing, hand wash, sanitize is ultimately your best defense to this virus. That is the most important thing. Uh, because if we address this pandemic as a community, as a nation, Navajo Nation, as a community, Chin Lee and all other hundred and ten communities throughout Navajo, we could honestly start picking up our economy. We could honestly see the economy starting to be revitalized. And I shared that with the reporter from NBC, um, that if both parties, Democratic and Republican, could work together and focus on a pandemic uh, appropriation, something that would address this COVID pandemic. We can get out of this economic, um, recession. Because this virus, not only has it devastated families, devastated our, um, elders um, and our loved ones, our coworkers, but it has devastated the economy of our nation. It has devastated the confidence. Because you hear it every day, hey, um, if I go out, am I gonna get sick? You know, that, that's what I thought too. I honestly don't know where I got this. And I only deducted to two locations. Um, one of them is a gas station in Phoenix on Third Avenue in Indian School. Uh, I was thinking about something else, putting the gas in my car, put the car, uh, gas nozzle back into the station. And I happened to wipe my nose. And I'm like, what did I just do? And went into the car and sprayed the heck out of my face and my hand. Um, the other place was a convenience store on Fifteenth Avenue in Indian School. And, um, you know, uh, when you walk out of the convenience store and you see the s- the sun glittering through the plexiglass door, you can see smears. Well, I opened it way up there, so I won't touch it. I didn't wipe my hands down. Um, so those are the two places I believe I contacted this virus. And as I said earlier, it is a very contagious virus. It has no whims on taking you. Um, and a lot of the folks that have contacted me in the past three hours have said to me that, um, that it starts playing with you mentally. Uh, and, you know, I'm, I'm taking all this and advice from family. And, um, all I can s- share with all of you that are on this town hall is be vigilant. Be very vigilant. It is very important that you, when you leave your home in the morning, you come back. Even the dog, puppy, is expecting you back that following evening. So with that, I, I, I hope I expressed the importance of the viruses, um, um, life. I mean, it, it really is. Uh, so with that, I, um, I wish you all well, be safe, God bless you, and thank you very much.
Thank you, Arizona Representative Orlando Teller. For, for sharing your experience with, uh, all of us that are on this, um, town hall. Uh, just wanted to conclude by saying thank you, Representative Teller for uh, sharing what you've experienced and, you know, it, we're all not immune. We can catch it. We can catch it anytime. I can catch it. You can catch it. And I think it's very important that we understand that. Doesn't matter if you're a Republican Democrat or you're a leader or you're, you're unemployed. This virus doesn't care really who you are, other than just to take you down, get you sick. And we have to put on the armor. That's our masks. You know, put on our armor, because we're in a battle, we're in a war. To fight this monster that has snuck into our homes and our communities and our nation. You know, and, and appreciate Representative Teller, uh, still has a sense of humor, even though he's COVID positive. When he says, even our puppies, our puppies miss us. Even our puppies wanna see us come home. Uh, that's, that's encouraging to hear, uh, from our representative that this virus is not gonna take him down. I can see that in him. That's the strength and resilience of all of us out there. We can overcome. Keep each other safe, take each, take care of everybody. We're, we're strong, we're survivors. We're overcomers, as I always say. And Representative Teller and the many, many others throughout the Navajo. the many, many others throughout the Navajo Nation, throughout this country and throughout the world, we continue to be on our, on our knees, praying for your recovery. And I know that Representative Teller will be back. And, uh, he just got re-elected, congratulations. Um, also, um, uh, looking forward to, um, working on many issues pertaining to our people, so. Thank you so much, Representative Teller, and we'll, we'll turn the time over to, uh, Dr. Jill Jim to give us an overview on what's happening. Uh, Vice President mentioned the big numbers all around us. And the numbers increasing here on Navajo as well, so Dr. Jim, uh, is doing an outstanding job being the head of the Health Command Operations Center here on the Navajo Nation, working around the clock. And for each and every one of you. You know, there are people that are doing this on a daily basis and we don't think as much as we should. But Dr. Jill Jim, I want to say to your team, we appreciate their hard work. And please let them know on behalf of the Navajo people that we appreciate what they're doing. Including Dr. Fowler and our Navajo Nation employees doing an outstanding job through some of these unprecedented times. And it's all because we want our people to be safe and healthy. Dr. Jill Jim? Thank you.
So if you look at this map, um, you kinda wanna see where the new cases were today. And it gives you an idea, there's twenty-one, um, new cases, um, in Tipisity. And a hundred and thirty-two cases in the last seven days. Although Kianta, sixty-nine cases in the last seven days and twelve new cases. And then Shipprock, a hundred and eighteen cases with twenty-three new cases today. Chin Lee with the highest, you're probably looking at two hundred and twenty-four cases in the last seven days, thirty-three new cases today. Fort Defiance, seventeen new cases, ninety-four cases in the last seven, or seven days, ninety-four cases. Winslow, uh, fifty-one cases and four, in the last seven days and four new cases today. And then Gallup with two hundred and twenty-eight new cases in the last seven days and thirty-eight today. And then nineteen in Crown Point area, which includes the three, um, satellite clinics. Um, this is good information to help you, so high cases today in Gallup, over there almost forty new cases, thirty-eight cases. Second one is over the thirty cases, thirty-three cases in Chin Lee and Tipisity and twenty-one. And that is enough education, I guess, to highlight where the spread is. And I think when we look at the numbers, you can tell it's going up, so. As we're talking about public health orders, um, why we do public health orders, we're on Public Health Order Thirty. And it's shelter in place, reissuing a stay-at-home and shelter-in-place lockdown order for three consecutive weeks. The mall is leaning, three weeks, so. I feel like we all need to go back to understanding what shelter is, uh, shelter in places. On the on, and I guess you could say, some of us are driving around thinking that we are not in a shelter in place, technically you're supposed to be home. Only to get essential services. Because of the rising cases. The, the curfew that they need, the, the lockdown that they, so. And everyone knows when we see shelter in place, stay in, in, at home as much as you can. That's why the government offices, most of them were, um, reduced workforce for that reason. Because of the rising cases. It's to save lives and reduce the risk of transmission are the main goals. As we know that COVID is very transmittable through droplets, germs that are on surfaces for a number of hours. Someone sneezing, someone handshaking, someone hugging, gathering, laughing, um, sharing food, um, congregating with a number of people, those are all, um, recipes for a high risk of transmission for COVID. And at the time, we had thirty-four communities, um, we have our third health advisory out. If you look on our Department of Health web page, there's, um, now we have over fifty-five communities. All the way, new communities are highlighted in asterisk. If you're looking at the screen and you see new communities in asterisk, all the way across the reservation. From Alamo to Crown Point to Fort Defiance to Kibetu, Kianta, Inion, Rock Point, East Nazbuns, Twajule, Salana, Twin Lakes, Whupurwell, White Cone. Oh, it's called the Hotel, it's everywhere. So just as a reminder, these are identified as uncontrolled spread because of the number of cases um, per, um, community population. We don't, um, show the numbers, but if there are more cases, then there needs to be in a community. Based on our cumulative incidence rate, we calculate those. So these are updated on a weekly basis on the Department of Health web page and President's office also shares this information to inform everybody. And it's not a way to, um, remind each other that, that, um, this community is, um, increasing cases. No means to discriminate, but to tell people that this is, um, new cases and they're on a rise. Individuals at a high risk for COVID have been experiencing more ill- illness, or older adults. Individuals with cancer, chronic kidney disease, heart conditions, over obesity and severe, obesity and severe obesity, pregnancy, smoking. Um, that was interesting, I did hear that smoking was a factor of increasing your, worsening your conditions for COVID. So there are enough studies to expand this list of those that are more likely to get COVID. When COVID first started, um, in January, there were very few, um, names or conditions on here. Um, of course, type-two diabetes is very prevalent here on Navajo Nation. Um, these are all conditions that we, um, have here. Some of them are higher than, um, other populations, which we call as disparities. Those that are increased risk for severe illness. There is also those that have asthma and other conditions, overweight, type-one diabetes, that, that, any. So just as a reminder, um, education, be informed, um, educate others, um, talk to people across the nation that these, um, exist and at the beginning, as I mentioned, we started with thirty-four communities. And basically, the objective of these shelter in place is to reduce and control the spread and also make sure that we don't overwhelm our healthcare system. And over and over, I think, for the last couple of months, we look at the hospitals. Um, we don't have enough hospitals, we don't have enough healthcare providers. The beds. And so that is very detrimental, we're, we are there. We have, um, broken our highest cases, as I mentioned before, for COVID here, we are past the peak, when you look at the sm- smooth curve as well. Everyone is, is increasing as high numbers everywhere. And that's why we need to shelter in place. When we issue out this shelter in place, it says in bold letters here, individuals are required to stay home and stay on the Navajo Nation. Mainly, it's to, um, decrease your exposure and we know that protocols on the Navajo Nation is more safe than other areas as, um, President and Vice President and others have told us numerous times. Refrain from off-reservation travel as much as you can. Individuals are advised to gather with, um, not to gather with anyone outside your immediate households and stay within your local communities. And so, on the, a, 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 uh, quite the, um, at your local bashas, your gas station to do your laundry. But for unnonessential things, it's not necessary. I'm sure you, there are things that can be, um, you can hold and wait and reschedule. But for medical access, yes, if you need to go to the hospital and go to your appointment or go to the emergency room. Auto, the non-isolation and quarantine, um, that to self-monitor for the next three weeks if you are needed, that if you feel like you've been exposed as a close contact or either, um, you're positive. And so make sure that you recover safely, uh, before you go and be around others or begin, um, visiting or going to get your essential services, so always have a plan in place, so continue to do that. Allah this is to reduce transmission and interact, so shelter in place, miss, and is all individuals on the Navajo Nation shall shelter in place and must stay at home and strictly limit movement within and outside of their communities and limit public contact with others. Individuals may leave their place of residence only for emergencies or to perform essential activities. So just as a reminder, what shelter in place mean, it's not to drive around and roam around and, and do things that are normal, the, today, the next three weeks or the la- next two weeks or now, it's not normal. COVID is everywhere, it is community spread. And that's why we have to stay home and s- staying home is the safest place for yourself and to protect yourself and your families, and so. The Public Health Order does talk about certain permissions, and so what I'm going down to is the hours of operation. Um, that these are allowed between seven AM and three PM, um, different businesses. We did make a revision on the reopening plan, um, here you'll see, we're in red. We are back in red status for the Navajo Nation reopening, and that's why the shelter in places is, um, on a public health order. If you scroll down to the business and the groceries, there is a section, um, here with grocery stores and the limit, gas stations, five persons or less in the store, laundry facilities, ten persons or less, dining is drive-through only, other youth programs are, um, not permitted, casinos, parasolons, flea markets, roadside markets, recreation, but for the grocery stores, there was a correction, we did do an amendment on number twenty-nine and there is a clarification here that you can go on, um, to, um, understand the correct, um, number is in your grocery store, so. In this order by the Navajo O H office, it's different. Lee bashas at fifty customers, and this was initiated in April, so we're going by that, um, numbers and recommendation. So it varies between thirty and fifty individuals in a store, so everyone can understand the difference, so. Um, back to the Public Health Order, um, that's where we're at with the Public Health Order, everyone needs to avoid um, public gatherings, non-essential travel. Visitors are not allowed at this time as well. And all, all are continuing messages to avoid close contact with, um, people who are sick, wash your hands, um, to the extent possible, avoid touching high touch surface areas. Uh, wear a mask, avoiding and avoid touching your face, nose and eyes, et cetera. Clean and disinfect your home to remove germs and all of these are, um, recommendations. And if you go down to the Public Health Order and if you don't know what essential activities or businesses are, they're identified here, so. I just wanted to, uh, remind everyone of the different, um, ways of understanding the Public Health Orders as part of our education tonight, so stay local and stay safe. Um, that is the message. And stay local meaning in your own communities, on the Navajo Nation, on your home, so. I just wanted to remind everyone of the Public Health Order and the meaning of shelter in place and I think Shama, Dr. Fowler, maybe you can, um, help me with a lot of that in Navajo, explaining what shelter in place really means and, um, oh, what the just, I think that the, um, I want to ask for you to help me in the translation of sheltering in place and understanding that the neck edition. Um, bad bits, so, um, Shama, thank you and I'll hand the time over to you.
Oh, yeah. Oh, cool. Um, the Zari Ba'ahheh, since I seen so go. The neck edge of Bayon, he is behold, I he is a zero, Ba'ahheh, since. But could I need to shut it, she is shady, my dish, please, nature. I don't worry, she is she, I should have done that, but I'm at the she. Chudus ah hole, yeah, no, I didn't, he is a national, yeah, Chudus ah hole, yeah, no. I didn't, um, I should run to, could I tell her how to send the eight, I should. Okay, I seen so go, eh, um division of human resource. I just eh, yeah, now, Nishal, Lini, because it is, gee, I don't, I seen so go, be his, I need, I got the name. I just eh, yeah, she knows, she. Do I quit, you know, do I need to, I say. She has asked you, eh, I seen so go, the neck edge, eh, yeah, yes, he. Benina, I just, yes, he, eh, I seen so go, he is Zari, gee, yeah, go, a delna. I seen so go, she, I need, because it is, gee, indeed. Joe, Joe, dead, dead, neither, a delna. What I eh, I just, I sad, and then he, Ben, he said, I asked you. Do I quit, you know, ah, no, I can't, I can't, I can't, I. I could, he, 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 eh, do, 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 Ba'ahheh, he, it's, and then, eh. I can't, I'm not, I guess, eh, he, eh. I seen so, I seen, could I, I'm not, I'm telling, I'm not, la. Do I seen so, could I, is a no, it's, I, gee. I, I, he is a no, it's, I, nah, la. Don't ask, oh, eh, I'm not, I'm telling, he is so, can he, now, like, can he, can he, I'm telling. Ben, I'm not, I'm telling, she, eh, she, the name. Oh, I you go, I'm not, I'm telling. Could I, eh, he, not, I'm telling, yeah, I see. He, eh, still, I don't, she, yeah. Could I, I'm not, so, Zino, I don't, she, yeah, I'm not, I'm telling, yeah, he is, I'm not, I'm telling. I don't, she, eh, he, could I, shelter in place, he's, Nini. Oh, I need, so, and da, yeah, he, then, da, I don't, what it. Joe, eh, she, I'm, I, yeah, go, I should, can you, Ben, I'm telling, eh, I'll, I. When the, it's, eh, eh, could I? But she, he, the name, see, he, eh, yeah, do, do, I quit, eh, he, eh, but, neither, eh, could I? Nah, show, he, Nlini. I don't, I seen so go, I'm not, I'm telling, you, and I'm telling, custory, and they, nah. I don't, facility maintenance, I also, I should, eh, oh, Lili, he, eh. I seen so go, could I, I need, I'm not, I'm. And I was, so, do, Ben, I'm, I seen, when the, eh, da, I'm, I'm, yeah, she, eh, I don't, she, the name. As twisani, it's a, can you, can, Lini. Eh, I'm not, I'm not, I'm telling, I should, I'm not, I'm telling, I should, I'm telling, I. Es twisan, itzilkejkei leni, eh, yala, n'achadeilni, sh'to'oh, o she ihukadeilni, n'da'inis, doh, bi yahanakha. Ha'ashin tsogo, t'gilzei da, nahon, eh dey jah, eh, doh, aj n'dahl, ne she t'gilzei. Ah, n'achat lal'al yu'go, bel da'al, ini, eh, doh, eh hehe eh. Ardo, kodo naltsos, jo, um, naltsos n'achan, na'dahajeh, jo, aj naltsos, so, ha'ashin noh, san, b'tadolne. Be'eta, dahol ya, shikaylo, shedunne eh. Ye, go, ah, nichitchanli, doh, oh, yu'go, na'achyol. Ha'ashin, eh, ni, ha'ashin tsogo, hats to'gi, doh, bel ya'teh, da'dan, ni, eh, ardo, sh'te, kudexi, ha'qazid, doh, doh, bay'at eh, da'dan, oh, na'achyoli. Ok, kon de, betech leni gi eh, houan, ne'asita, doh, bel ahhotenli ze. Ardo nahon, bel neitan eh, ah, le, tlod, na'achyol. Bel ezid, zelhla, ha'ni ona'ta, eh achyol. Do ya'teh, da'al la di, huixja, eh, beni na, beney bahigi eh ya, di kodo. Eh chin doh, eh ze, da'dezbali, mes, yani, ben dekhe kodo, nichichka, ah, behanasze. Shado, eh, shikaylo, shedunne, ah, isip, beni ye, oh, oh, eh doh, dalli, eh't eh inosen. Ah, na'ben le, washchigir, zuzne, da, ben yilna, ni, deh, kuijish, ben yilna, da'dan, ni. Ha'ashkhit ah, eh, bikkedet hotchi. Ha'ashhot iro, eh, shop, denosin. Oh, oh, koni, yu'denanitle. Oko, ha'le't ah, eh di, d'kwas, doh, jo, ba'i, d'kwas, nas, eh't ah, dahbe, bet, otjuni, eh, da, she, doh, ot'ah be. Be, be, otjo, ilya, nichi'ashin, nichil sado, initle, itlto'oh. Ok, kon de, ye, go, ye, nan, hin, tin, shikaylo, shedunne, ako di, kodo, executive order, dechneni, behesani, behatadilnei. Ha'yo' bikkahanol, eh, ha'ashin noh, la, eh, bikkahanol, ini, eh, eh hehe eh. N'achan, hui, ntsen, go'na', ah, kuijim hot ah, be, ben hichka, ah, ye, iltke. Jida, n'sh'snesh, asaha, n'sh'snesh. Beni na, eh di, bel n'dashneshi, bahan, ziltsa, houan, da'dokha, ah, na'haso, tchan, de'shno. Okon ho wadeh, ga'halak, wul, n'da'achyel, etsa, ho wadeh, de'shno, asaha, n'sh'snesh. Ok, kon de, ah, nan, n'shteniyah, doh, ah, kro, ah, shet, jo, ah, kon, tzitzikheso. Tchosetoy, n'sto, kha'don le, ah, choro, xta'ado, be'ido, gisi, ah, t'etschma, sh'techi, ilch, be, kujitto. Eh huixla, jo, ahon wadeh, eh, kujitoni, kon nan, n'shtetoh, ahon, nan, na'teh. Ho wadeh, be'eshtehohl zini, nan, n'shtetoh, ah, ot'ah, be'eshtehohl zen. Eh, doh, ba't, dahol ya, shikaylo, shedunne eh, ha'ashin tsogo, di, cha'tamoch. Ne, ne, eh, doh, ni, sh'ehui, ntsen, on, hitchan, deil, kiel, ah, ni, t'entoh, ha'yo' bel iste, eh, zita, da, ardo, oh, nichil, n'da'achyel, shedoo eh, haset. Oko, chedun, da'chye, eh, oh, yu, b'ta'ashje. Ha'ashin, eh, ni, njoni, iteh, oh, chidachay, ta'ho, bahan, san, zeno, eh, isas zino, leh. Eh't ehhi, oh, yu, bel n'da'achyel, tzilkejkei, da'chil, ah, leni. Be, ah, ditchi, da'sohe, etsa, pchua eh, ya't eh, da'sli, on, dahol, ye, itlto'oh. Jo, ha'ashin, eh, she doh, ben da'ni, tin, da'shikaylo, shedunne, be'eta, ah, hol ya. Ardo, le, ch'adochah, ch'adi, da, da, le, chitchahoh. Ah, de, doh, le, nahon, da'al, da'hi, doh, ah, da'teh, da. Ha'ashin tsogo, amasan, eh, it'sheida, bel jo, ka'alchine, da. Aj, be, nahon, t'ila, eh, beni na, ahon, wadeh, n'dahaztchan, ya't eh, etchine. Ardo, amasan, eh, it'sheida, beni, ho, wadeh, nahaztchan, ah, da'al, nahola, ardo, de, n'danolt, eh, go, da. Eh't eh, yan, le, go, ch'inyan, eh, isupohol, ni, it eh, chavkha. Ardo, ah, ch'inyan, bel chas'ad, no'ya'go. Ardo, lal'al yu, oh, b'tadolchi, itlto'oh. Ha'ishit, zini, eh, enchdi, ah, nchdi, ah, doh, natchi, ne. Shohe, di, la dons, di, la, doh, bi, ra'tala, ardo, kujin, na'ch, ah, ah, da, b'ten, ni, oh. Eh, doh, ardo, da't, ne, ha'ashin tsogo, lal'al, doh, da't eh. Ardo, di, nal, n'shin, oh, leni, doh, ah, nichil, chathahos, zoro, aj, doh, di, testing, dehne. Aj, n'daal, khaido, ah, lal'al yu'go, ah, da'tal, tschan, tchodinne, sh'ede. La eh, kujit, sahots, oh, ze, eh, injeh. Aj, shedabi, itsesdadi, ch'ani, ona'ta, atsido, chanalkha. Ha'ashin, wudina, eh, bechall, nahon, ne. Jo, eh, nde, oh, ch'ani, ona'ta, eh, etsehun, deh, nez, gaidan, ne. Ye, go, she, b'tchvichachol, ni, doh, n'chandol, cha'to'oh. Ardo, n'dahl, n'shi, danal, leni, di, chak'eh, hazos, go, chathahos, zogi. Nichikay, ne, nichiyasan, hisstchui, dan leni, ha'yo' bich, eh, ya, da'tchi. Ah, de, natchi, shitnohar, doh, tzehtan, zen, itlto'oh. Ah, na'ntle'li, eh, doh, da, ha'ashin tsogo, amasan, le, it'she, chayga. Shohe, kwa'eshakha, anhyer, go'detoni. Ah, la, de, b'tchvich, ni'jono, ah, na'ntle'li, sa, b'tchvich, eh, jillne, ah. Ah, ita, sho, laha'ot'egi, b'tchvich, cha'tisze, de'toni, lgo, amasan, doh, eh che. Aj, ye, go, bahan, hasen, shikaylo, shedunne eh. Amasan, eh, it'she, annala, ama, ay'ya, dan leni. Ye, go, ba'hol ya, ha'yo' b'tchvi, yaltchi. Ardo, di, community spread, dehne. Ha'ashin tsogo, ah, ani, di, elchan, dey, chado, eh, yilch, shida'achyil, ini. Ni'wi, ni'wi, la, oko, etset, ah, haloh. Ardo, ye, oh, ch'etn'ach, ke, is'ashi, di, cha'tchan, shitag, elch'ena, ho, jish, neh. Etse, ni'wi, nosen. Di, n'dachre, chado, da'ch'iyam. La, da, ah, ch'edrel, tlo, da, be'ye, t'el'tas, al la, di, ndle, ch'inyan, da, bah, chota, ha'ch'el'tas. Eh, beni na, be'etse, be'eta, ah, hol ya. Ah, de, qarhon, nas, eh, ahon, wadeh, neitan, deh, nichitchin, doh, nichin, eh, b'tadat, eh, spad, go't eh, ya. Jo, ha'ashin, ah, di, ho, na'hasan, go. Eh, sh'tla, jeltah, doh, bel la, ke, n'tis, tchan, oh, hot eh. Eh, beni na, ba'hol ya, is'ashi, yilchine, dahon, noh, de, yilchine, eh, doh. Ah, la, eh, ha'yo' ya, ah, kon, zin, dahol ya, be'bel, kujil, na'ah. Gi, kedito'tchi, lo, ot'ah, ha'la, de, yilchine, gi. Ye, go, ah, tschan, ni, hitsan, ne, yila. Ardo, yan, nahalne, oh, yan, di, da'alchine, sh'altchan, deh, ben na'desne. Oh, chon, dahalne, ardo, di, nal, n'shin, oh, leni, itlto'oh. Ardo, nichinat, ani, sa, doh, ya't eh, be'echi, n'dahl, eh. Na'tani, nichido, ah, hot eh. Ah, koe, n'achan, tal, n'shi, ha'yo' da, di, nosen. Di, jida, la, anne, she, eh, di, d'kui, she, shenah, eh, cha'tin, doh, ah, kon, nashnesho. She, eh, di, ah, tschan, ne, doh, 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 um, doh, bikkahui, she, eh, de, ch'innan, ah, long, ha', zozee. Ha'ashin, ah, de, ne, di, nal, ni, eh, doh, sh'doh, ch'ata. She, eh, di, d'kui, shenah, eh, etan, ah, one, neh, da, doh, unch'teh, da, ch'no. This virus does not care how many years you've been an employee. The virus does not care the kind of position you have. The virus does not care how much money you make. Eh, ba'ah, konosen, shikaylo, shedunne eh. Ha'yo' da'achyed, nosen. Da'achyed, nosen, doh, iseton, i, sa, ya't eh, be'echi, ya'ta'tchi. Ha'la, koho, t'ani, beni na, shohe. Ha'le't ah, ha'yo' nat, oh, t'ahlach, jo, wi, zin. Amale, amasan, eh, annale. Amaya, jani, tleni, nichir, zatona, chansela, ho, wadeh. Ho, wadeh, eh, kro, kon, eskish, hola, etes, tsin, hola, be, ch'inyan, il, ini. Ha'ashin tsogo, eh, beno, eh, ne, ah, eh, ah, ch'inyan, il, eh. Ch'inyan, il, ini, ardo, tschan, il, eh, ho, njono, da, od'itho, eh, bi, isunani, cha'to, leh, ben hichka, yana, da, ho'teh, doh. Jo, hot'ah, so, de zen, ardo, ha'ashin, eh, na', eh, ta'itto. Eh, doh, be, etes, be, nll, klesh, da'etan, ha', t'ajel eh. Ardo, kon, eskish, da'etan, da, ndan, t'ajel, leh, doh, ya'teh, b'tat, ison. Jo, eh, nichin, chansela, ama, ni, tleni, oh, ot'ah, beney bah. Ardo, di, denan, oh, leni, nichishan. Eh ze, etahle, eh ze, n'dahke. Sen, da, b'tahol, ah, sen, da, ben, da'do, ah, nichishan. Ardo, ha'ashin tsogo, di, ah, all, ah, iteh, shikaylo, shedunne, nichie, oh, tlan, nichie, oh, il. Ah, all, ah, iteh, ok, kon deh, da'al, yizdol, zen, doh, yilchizdos, sen, doh, eh, yilchcha, elch'chye, doh, kwa'eh, nahon, eh, doh, doh. Jo, eh, eh, isup, beni, ye, ah, cha't eh. Kwa'eh, hot'ah, eh, hot'ah, na'la, eh, kujin, yotla, eh, eh, doh, shedunni, eh, eh, doh, da'shikaylo, shedunne, ardo, oh, kwa'da'achyed, oh, nene. Ha'ashin noh, la, ah, ot'ah, be, shenah, sh'ede, da'tchi, don, jonda. On, le, kodo, nichi, ah, nichinat, ah, anne, nichizaba'hol ya. Kodeh, ha'leni, kon, ne, be'achchi, ha'yo' be'achchi. Ah, ne, be'eta, ah, hol ya, oko, kodo, yashthi, oh. Kodo, shemasan, eh, dahon, deh, shenal, da, dahon, deh. Ka'de, da'le, kwa'eh, na'tani, sunli, oh, cha'hala, oh, am, 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 jenil, shet, noh, da. Na'tani, sunli, eh, doh, ah, ned, eh, ta'edunni, da, oh, eh yu, denan, ahon, bel la'ashla, ibayan, t'hi. Ardo, all, ah, iteh, be'oh, il, il, all, ah, iteh, bel, laha'ot'ah, be'ya, da'ho, ah, doh, ah, iteh, ne, ne, l'tah, be'ya, da'ho, ah, da. La, bezad, anjona, la, bezad, oh, ya'ta'teh, da. Ha'ashin, eh, she, ihoh, hot ni, doh, leh, ha'ashin, eh, she, eh, doh, ya'teh, ham, sedetoh, chos, eh, di, deni, yash, eh, ni. Di, ah, dechni, eh, doh, don, seno. Ok, kon deh, ye, go, na'ill, na', doh, nan, hin, tin, shikaylo, shedunne eh. Oko, ah, ben, ts'oi, ta'eh, kodo, ba'nan, hin, itchan, doh, ba'nan, hin, oh, shchan. Ye, go, eh, da'hol ya. Iseton, i, jo, ah, kuijim, d'kui, she, be'han, na'atseho. Ka'de, she, iked, itchan, leh, ba'ahye, hui, ntsen, doh, leh. Kodo, shiyaj, eh, ne, priority, yilne. Ah, eh, cha'ida, nicha, priority. Nicha, priority, eh, di, cares, at, chi, lon, le, thirty-first, eh, tchan, beso, chi, doh, il, ha'neh. Beso, leni, oh, eh yu, oh, ha'neh, go't, eh, shikaylo, shedunne eh. Beso, eh, doh, ah, tza, bay'atchi, da. Beso, leni, eh, nahon, t'lehli, iteh. Et di, go, et di, ardo, tschan, choz, ido, doh, imjona, ardo, tschan, choz, ido, ah, kro. Di, ina, well, yani, eh, ye, go, bahas, tchi. Eh, eh, doh, ah, kon, nahon, t'lehla. We, ina'i, chutz, zino, leh, ha'ket, ah, on, leh, ha'zit, aj. Ba'ah, kujin, li'ao, il, eh, ah, kwa. Ardo, nahon, oh, ah, da, eh, beni na, we, ina'selani. Ba'ahye, zinzon, il, eh, ha'male, ha'ya'eh, noh, nla. Ha'masan, eh, dahon, oh, ha'ch'ey, ha'nal, da. Ardo, cha'ta'chaya, sh'hamaya, shikye. Eh, she, ah, t'eh, lal'do, hot'ah, itche, oh, cha'tahodila. Ch'tuma, eh, den, eh, doh, she, ch'ni, da, aldo, ah, ni, tchan, nichi'ma, hola, doh, b'chak, neitan, nichi'ma, nahastan. Ardo, ya, dechni, shedoo, jo, eh, ha'ashin tsogo, oh, yu, hishtchui, doh, sani. Ba'ta, bahan, ne'taholno, shedoo, laha'ot'ah, na'sh, de'de, tchan, ah. Be, doh, laha'ot'ah, na, be'de, tchan, ah, kon deh. Ha'ashin, eh, ah, nan, de'de, tchan, kodo, ba, bahol, neh, ardo, nan, eh, neh. Ardo, ardo, bel la, de, beso, yin, ke, eh, doh, oh, il, da. Di, nichidunne, leni, benen, nizar, be'y, ben, na'ntin, oh. Aj, eh, ilne, shiyaj, sh'e'we, sh'to'oh, ni. Nichidoo, oh, hotnot, eh, doh, leh, kon, so, nichidushne, shikaylo, shedunne eh. Ha'ashin, ni, la, doh, ye, go, dena, doh, tsat, dan deh. Ah, zago, hot'ah, be'chach, ya'tchi, oh, nch'te, doh, leh, oh, teh. Bikkesh, d'etotchi. Doh, eh, nichich, ah, shish, ke, oh, enchit, b'shnida, jo, di, na'ntin, eh. Ah, le, ilkeda, amasan, eh, annala, dan, lena, aj. Ha'le't ah, hui, doh, ala, ha'le't ah, kwen, hin, na'ntin. Nahon, doh, t'lehla, ha'le't ah, doh, ba'dad, di, cha'tala. Jo, eh, nde, yen, si, ill, kes. Ah, etze, eh, beni na, ah, nhill, oh, ah, n'sun, la, la, da. Oko, shnas, eh, ha'ni, t'ero, leh, leh, na'din, tizdin, ah, chideh, ka'dash, hot'eh, doh. Ka'dash, eh, ah, n'achalchine, nichitso, ken, hinale ken, da'ntin, doh, leh, jo, wi, zin, itlto'oh. Ah, be, zin, ts'oi, ta'ah, kodo, ah, kodo, da, be, bel, kujil, na, she, ay, kedito'tchi, lo, ot'ah. Ha'ashin, eh, she, eh, njono, be, b'tchvich, ya, jilchi, oh, ne, yila, ardo, yin, ya, yin, na, ilkete, leh. Oko, there was a day to, na'kiskan, da, na', oh, jo, nishon, nas, eh, khalid, doh, doh, ben nahon, zida. Na'kiskan, da, da, ne, leh, eh, neh, shohe, shet, so, shapneh. De, abal, la'kan, eh, etje, ha'zi. I have to say this in English, Nila. One of the hardest thing was to outlive my son, Nila. And I think the hardest part is to outlive your child. La, hot'ah, be, doh, na'sit, ah, and not such, noh. Oh, ye, go, na'ill, na. And just imagine how many of our parents and grandparents, great-grandparents, our Nalys, have gone through this. Ah, ani, na'ill, na', doh, eh, che, ne, yil, na. Eh, beni na, kodo, ba'nan, hin, itchan. Oh, hot'oh, ni, eh, doh, ni, zin, da, ok, kon, de, ah, ni, he. Bich, eh, ne, bah, doh, ha'yo' bel, oh, hotinne, eh, ze, oh. Oh, hot'ah, she, eh, nahon, eh, doh, doh. Jo, di, ah, le, na'achyol, la, ha'it, ah, eh, nahon, eh, ti. Ch'ol, koe, la, doh, na'gah, da'lah, nahon, da'nad, eh, oh, ch'ol. Da, ne, itlto', jo, di, yindin, eh, she, ha'ashin, eh, she, ye, ye, ah, de'to, di, eh, da'chay. Hola, asetoy, da'tze, doh, bel ch'eyat, eh, da'se, kazi, da'tze, jo, eh, di, nchche. Nchche, ah, ben, se, kesi, jo, eh, kabeh, yilta, wi, neh. Le, eh, hishtchui, doh, sani, itan, neh. Ah, de, she, ah, doh, de, di, yilsel, da, nichi, she, eh, de, doh, yilsel, eh, so, ke, annali, ke, dan, oh, leni. Dan, chid, noh, yilta, ha'neh. Shedoo, oh, chedun, dun, da, t'ah, doh, ha'noh, da, chedun, na, t'ah, and, ah, ton, da, de'tah, doh, ha'noh, da. Oh, eh yu, go, ben, da, n'tin, da, hishtchui, doh, sani. Eh, ah, de, shnen, leh, nas, shchan, iteh, eh, doh, leh. Di, nchche, ah, ben, se, kesi, be, yilta, wi, nei, aj, oh, da, di, chay. Oh, yu, da, de'shon, so, ton, da, chye. Oh, nas, eh, ah, kujin, she, ka'tan, il, ke, ardo, bikkendah, ni. Eh, eh, doh, da, doh, il, da, dan, yilni, ne, swi, doh, sani. Oko, kon, tsogo, she, eh, ya. Ben yilna, hui, shne, doh, leh, oh, eh yu, go, ah, bahan, ne, hola, shikaylo, shedunne eh. La, go, bahan, ne, ok, kon deh, ah, yltschon. Jo, n'achaya'teh, doh, eh, di, neh. N'achaya'teh, doh, di, ni, doh, n'achaya'teh, go, ni, zin. Na'ill, na', shikaylo, shedunne, ye, go, ba'ahye, go, ba'ahye, ni, zin, dan, deh, jo, kodo, da, isunoltzka'i, ba'ahye, ni, zin. Oko, ah, ben, ts'oi, ta'ah, b'tchvich, cha'in, shni, go, kodo, nichi'hanastze. Oko, nichidoo, kon, not, eh, doh, leh, b'tchvich, cha'in, cha'in, oh, leni, doh, b'tchvich, nichit, ke, doh, b'tchvich, nichit, zila, et, oh, leh. Sa, ya'teh, be'echi, eh'ta'tchi, eh, yu, da'achyin, oh, shikaylo, shedunne eh. Hot'ah, ban, de, ni, nan, he'ses, kan, doh, leh, doh, na, hehe, shikaylo, shedunne eh. Kon, tsogo, ah, nan, n'shtla, doh, leh, shenah, ah, ni, eh, hehe eh, da, isunoltzka', kujin, na, ho, jish.